Impact. On our community in the arena of civil rights and equality. Now therefore, be it ordained by the vote of the city council as follows. Section one. The new pier in Castle Park shall be officially. Named the Gail Jenkins Memorial Pier. In honor of the late Ms. Jenkins, the late Miss Gail Jenkins. Your excellent Jenkins. Of section two. The designation. To recognize and celebrate Gail Jenkins' commitment to the betterment of our community and her lasting contributions beyond her activities in the. Section three, the city council directs the Parks and Recreation Department to install. Appropriate signage reflecting the name Gail Jenkins Memorial Pier. At the entrance of the park. Section four. This ordinance shall. Effect immediately will be enforced immediately upon passage. Whereupon the vote and foregoing having been submitted to a vote. On this day of 2024. The vote therefore resulted, it will result as follows. I would like to also indicate with this evidence. That you have in your packets, council. Uh these are excerpts from uh booklets that she has and we look at the booklets. Uh Our Minds on Freedom. And. Twenty-four nineteen sixty-four. And she is in chapter eight, Women in the Field. Armed Resistance and the Pursuit of. Local Leadership, that was from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-seven. It is hard, it's a hard struggle and a long fight. And I guess if we keep the faith. We can overcome one day stated by Mrs. Gail Jenkins, rural Louisiana civil rights activist. Also, in the same booklet. She indicates. The presence of Gail Jenkins. An African-American and a woman at the negotiating table was significant to the process. Of the seventy-one members of the BCC and Ms. Jenkins, she was part of the negotiation table. At Crown's over there. She's also honored in the Library of Congress. And you'll see where as Ms. Jenkins, her daughter Toni and then her son who. Elliot Jenkins are listed in the Library of Congress. Finally, Ms. Jenkins was honored at the uh. At school system, at Central, at Central Elementary School. And that's where you will find the Gail Jenkins. Auditorium, that was on May twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. In two thousand. I guess. And that state marker and along with auditorium will be. There will be an event at a later date by the family. On the state marker and auditorium. And with that being said, she also was honored by the state. Uh Bogalusa to Baton Rouge March. With that being said, she has a, a long legacy. And she is always honored. And I would like to say then at this point. I would like to make a. A motion that we accept this resolution from Mayor Trump as we.
Need a second? We have a motion for a second from the Gail Jenkins Memorial. Do we have to be discussing from the public on this matter?
Uh my name is King Merrick, address in nine twenty pounds, East Fourth Street, apartment seventy. Uh Ms. Gail Jenkins was a great access to this diminution. And a lot of y'all people don't really know about the civil rights movement because they're young parents, young parents raising young kids. Haven't talked about the civil rights movement. So we need every opportunity we can to, to break that idea of who is Ms. Gail Jenkins' mother? When they go to Castle Park, who is Ms. Gail Jenkins' mother? And their mother could tell them who Ms. Gail Jenkins was. So I commend Mayor Trump for this and I accept the council will please support this effort. Because Ms. Gail Jenkins was a great access to our community. She wasn't scared, she didn't back down, she knew when it was time to stand up, she knew when it was time to sit down and show up. And she, that made her a very wise person. So I'm asking that the council will please vote to approve this pier at the uh. At the Castle Park in honor and recognition of Ms. Gail Jenkins, thank you.
Thank you. A needed grade, one-ten grade prime of Bogalusa. Our city charter does not allow the city council to direct workers in any regard. So there's a little technicality here ordinance. It says the city council directs Parks and Recreation Department. You cannot direct anybody, that's all in the paper's code. You can name it this pier, but you can't tell them to go put it out there. And that's all, it just needs to be straightened up as far as technicalities.
Thank you for that, your attention, mayor.
Morgan Austin, seven thirty six. Uh I was sitting in this one, sitting in the government. It brought back a lot of numbers.
Pick up a little bit more, King, on the here.
They brought back a lot of numbers and flash. We all want to know who the late, uh, Gail Jenkins played a large contribution. In the civil rights movement and our community. We have several things that I. And I try to share with my. At the park, you look at, you look at that. Uh you get there and they look at the children enjoying the place now. Like to recall today, the Castle Park was integrated. I was a customer in the integration of Castle Park. I took some knots and licked on my head at Castle Park. And I'm not against in thinking being honored at here. In the history of Bogalusa, I'm proud of Castle Clayton. Cause those grab all the cans come alive in Bogalusa. Uh we, I also come up there and tell you about the potential that they have in Bogalusa. But I was thinking about Castle Park. And young children, young people, there's nothing. Maybe dangerous example they have. The behavior of panic and running away. At that particular day, the Castle Park was integrated. There was a man, he wasn't a very big man in his chest. But there was a man and those kids ran away and they jumped on the back of his truck. He called him, told him, come back off that truck. At that time, I was being beaten and he wouldn't leave me in that park at all. And those kids because of this drug, they came back. And they came back, he was arrested. Taken to Franklin jail where he was beaten. And thought he said that beating that he took in jail. He died early, young boy. I think we need to look at all of them also. His name was Sam Vaughn. He was the grandfather of our city attorney. And uh you know, I know. My proteges, the young ones have been recognized, the hits, they've been recognized. The Jenkins, she's been recognized. I think we need to take a look at somebody that said on the mark. He was a soldier of the street, soldier of the world, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they want to add? Any council members have anything they want to add?
Well, the only additional uh addition that I have, and thanks, thank you everyone for your, for your comments. In reference to uh Ms. Jenkins. Is that uh. I do, if I may, make a, a motion. Uh in section. In section uh. Three. To indicate. That the enforcers of this particular, we, we do have certain sections that enforce uh our ordinance. The enforcers of this particular ordinance. Will be named the Parks and Recreation Department. They will be the department to enforce this particular ordinance, I make a motion for that.
Back to the motion to amend the one you got now, but right now we're in the middle of taking a vote on the ones for ours.
Okay, okay.
I thank you for that. Anyone else have anything to say on the council? If there being no one else, we'll call the vote, the vote count.
I would just like to say um. That she will be dearly um and always recognized and yes, a pier is very nice. And years later, we'll be still rebuilding and adding on the pier. And hopefully one day soon, we'll be able to put a memorial um of her in the Castle Park. Cause this is a great start. Um I did speak to one of the family members, they're very excited about it and you know, very grateful to everyone keeping their family legacy alive. And I would just like to add that for the record.
Thank you, ma'am, you're welcome.
I.
I suppose it's our turn.
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Douglas. Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keith.
Aye.
Thank you for that, Mr. Brown, we want to invite, just advise you that we're going to take what you, what you spoke of, we'll make notes of it. I'm going to give the legal counsel and see how that's to be determined and we'll get back with you on another time. We have to amend this, we passed, we will, but we will take what you spoke of and revise it and I thank you very much for that. Moving right on, we're going to back up in just a second. If you'll notice on your agenda, you have a discussion of a budget to be introduced tonight, it will not be introduced tonight. Uh and the reasons beyond uh discussion of legal matters with our, our legal staff. And we'll bring this attention to you when, when we decide what's going to be done with legal matters. Thank you for your attention in that matter. The next one we have, the state ordinance we have to be introduced to, be introduced to by Councilwoman uh Kate.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Bogalusa to construct and operate a billboard used for advertising. Whereas the city of Bogalusa recognizes the need to regulate and generate revenue from the use of city-owned billboards for advertising purposes. And whereas the city seeks to establish guidelines for the rental and usage of city-owned billboards to ensure fair and equitable access to advertising space. And there's four or five different sections laid out. Section one gives you the definitions of the purpose for this ordinance. Number one is city-owned billboards that are owned and operated by the city of Bogalusa. Advertisement means any message, image, or display intended to promote or advertise a product, service, event, or entity. And a licensee is any individual, business, or organization granted permission to advertise on a city-owned billboard. Section two is about the rental fee installation. The city of Bogalusa will charge a monthly rental fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for the use of city-owned billboards. The applicant may opt to get a third-party company to install their advertisement. Or the applicant may pay the city to install it for four hundred dollars due to the calculated cost of manpower and city equipment. There's an application process, any individual, business, or organization wishing to advertise. Visit an application to the city of Bogalusa. The application shall include the proposed advertisement content. Deposit. An application shall be reviewed and approved by the city, subject to the availability of billboard space and compliance with all applicable regulations. And then there are uh display guidelines. Uh advertisement displayed on city billboards, city-owned billboards must comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Use advertisement deemed inappropriate, offensive, or in violation of community standards. And advertisements must be securely affixed to the billboard in a manner that does not cause damage or devastation. And then sections, fifth and five is the enforcement. The law here to comply with provisions of this ordinance may result in the eradication of the licensee's advertising privileges and forfeiture of the deposit. And the city of Bogalusa may take legal action to recover any damages incurred as a result of not complying to this ordinance. And the effective date will uh take effect immediately upon the passage and approval of the council.
Thank you, ma'am, you're welcome. Mary, do we have a motion for this order?
Some.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion for a second, if any one in the public has anything they want to add and give the ordinance. Please come on.
Tell you we filed four fourteen Mississippi, do we own the city billboard?
We will, we will.
No, ma'am, we currently um do not own a billboard, so. Last year, uh administration put in an application with the state to construct a billboard along Highway twenty-one because we own a parcel of land right in E-sixth Street. Uh but once, if this is passed tonight, once we go out to figure out who's going to build the billboard through RFP, it'll come back to the council. So this isn't to approve the building of it, it's just to approve the possibility that we're going to try to construct a billboard.
Can I ask why we just wanted to get?
As a revenue generator for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Plaid, thank you, mayor. And there's no discussion of this matter for the public. There being no other discussion from the public, there's either discussion from the council.
The only discussion that I have is that um. E-sixth and Southern is the District A and I did check. Piece of parcel out which uh as the mayor said, we own that, we own that land in that area. I think it will be an excellent uh revenue generating uh for us. I'm not certain if we're going to have uh political signs there, but as far as, as signs being placed in that area. I think, you know, we need, we need revenue for.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Kate. I would just like to ask the city attorney, we checked into that, everything was square away with that property, Southern Drive, correct? State and city is good, right, sir?
Sir.
Thank you for that. There any other discussion from the council on this matter?
Also was verified by um the uh. The uh. Folks out in um. Franklinton. Uh Jimbo's office, they did verify that was our, that was our piece of land.
And so just to clarify that the city does have a D O T D permit. Because on the state highway, state street, next to the Department of Transportation, you know, anything along the state highway. And that is sincere, I stayed highway and I saw all the permits and order for this. So I didn't see any issues with the city doing this.
And I thought I included, um I have an actual permit, but I'll put it in your own box.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And also too, I would like to add, um if no one is ready, um it would be a nice way to update. Like when you're entering to the um area of Covetum and you're coming in off of um. Highway twenty-one, they have an advertisement board where you can know what's actually going on within their community. So it's a good, it's another way to provide advertising for the citizens to know what's actually going on in the city of Bogalusa.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman, ma'am. Councilwoman Douglas?
We saying that uh politicians here.
You have to brush that question, you missed the right.
Okay, yes, that's what I'm asking because if a person is paying for this, then they should be able to.
Right.
What they.
As long as they follow the guidelines, everyone has.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. There's no more discussion, I call it for a vote, I vote count, please.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Calus?
Aye.
I suppose it's the government.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keith?
Aye.
motion carries, thank you for that, council, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you may, in the audience. Now I'd like to turn our attention to the next ordinance that's uh going to be introduced by the vote tonight and uh. Council, Councilwoman Irvin.
All right, this is a repeal of ordinance. Sorry for the interruption, I'll just focus. Repeal of ordinance twenty-three seventy-five from October first, twenty thirteen. As related to a monitoring on the issues of billboard licenses and approvals. I have to be in that meeting that when that just took place. Um. We do need to lift the ordinance that uh is a monitoring so we can build this billboard. A ordinance to repeal the ordinance twenty-three seventy-five as related to monitoring on the issues of billboard license approval. Whereas the city council repeals ordinance twenty-three seventy-five as related to the monitoring on the issues of billboard licenses and appeals. Be it ordained by the locals of city council, that uh mon, a monitoring is hereby lifted on the construction of any new billboards which is individually owned by companies, provided the billboard to meet all the qualifications of size, safety, and appearance. Be it ordained, all newly constructed billboards shall go through the city of Bogalusa Planning and Zoning Commission. After ninety days, if no action is taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the newly constructed billboard shall be on my credit, then will be introduced to the city council for possible consideration. Now therefore, be it ordained, the license and permit for all newly constructed billboard requirements shall be as follows. One thousand dollars for billboard placed within the city limits of Bogalusa, Louisiana. Pervial to the city of Bogalusa. For any billboard placed along the state highway or state street shall require to get additional permit from the Louisiana Department of Transportation. An additional permit, permit feet per state law. Billboard sizes as follows. Within the city limits that are not on state streets or not on state highways. Newly constructed billboards shall not exceed four by, four foot by eight foot in size and must be more than thirty-five feet from the center of the city-owned street. Billboards shall not be, shall not block right of ways. All newly constructed billboards shall have the same type of landscape. Example, flowers, shrubs, and plants. Billboards cannot, can't be lighted, provided no electrical wires are exposed. State-owned streets that are in the city limits, state and federal laws pertaining to billboards and permits shall prevail over city ordinance. Applicants desiring a billboard on a state-owned street or state highway must first apply to the Louisiana Department of Transportation. If approved by the state of Louisiana, then the applicant shall purchase another permit from the city of Bogalusa for an additional thousand dollars in public works. Repair of existing billboards. All existing billboards can be repaired or replaced by the same size and dimensions of the current existing billboard. Uh a billboard repair permit shall be a hundred dollars and purchased in public works. Content on billboards. None of newly constructed billboards shall contain anything that is offensive or not being family-friendly or anti-Bogalusa. Billboards only shall be warned by certified letter from the city of Bogalusa of offensive material. If offensive material was not removed from the billboard within ten days, the fine shall be twenty-five days, a day fine to the billboard owner. Now therefore, or further ordained, lives in this ordinance, twenty-three shall uh twenty-three shall seventy-five shall not apply to the ongoing monitoring on the street maintenance. A monitoring is hereby lifted, a depergents license on the issue of any depergents license or any action of the city will allow billboard on the city of Bogalusa per ordinance. And all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed. The ordinance is effective by passing of council and signed by the mayor. If not signed by the mayor, it is effective, provided in this charge. And of course, uh we did have a blanket, a monitoring that was put into place and no rules were ever established at that time, back in twenty thirteen.
Thank you, that councilwoman Irvin.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, do we have a discussion from the public? Ma'am?
Yeah, we filed four fourteen Mississippi. I believe that the planning and zoning is doing sixty days, not ninety days now, we want to amend that. Um that it will go to the council as approved after sixty days, not ninety days. So we may want to double check that. And then the other thing that concerns me is the definition of um. I can't remember the words that you were using, but uh inappropriate language or whatever, you know. If you could find some kind of legal reference for that so that it's not up to planning and zoning or whatever to decide if that the wording is inappropriate, I would just like some more. For it to be more specific. And then I'm not saying to not approve that, but maybe you guys can come back and revisit that and get more specific about the language on that so that that we know what, what that means.
Planning and zoning would, planning and zoning would only decide whether or not a, on a state-owned billboard, it wasn't safe.
I know, but you have that in the language and I'm saying that you need to be more clear about what that means, you know. Anti-Bogalusa is pretty vague and, and uh. What is inappropriate, thank you.
This matter. If I may, whoever the phone is ringing, silence your phone, we're in the middle of a council meeting. Silence.
Silence, or you'll have to leave out.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
We will check that immediately, thank you again.
We can always make amendments.
Any other discussion from the public on this matter? There being any other discussion from the council? There being none, vote by vote call, please.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Kelles?
Aye.
Vice President Douglin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Case?
Aye.
Councilwoman Phee?
Aye.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Case?
Uh, I had talked earlier with President Kelles in reference to that ordinance that has been tabled and contemplated on bringing it back and the ordinance is entitled, ordinance related to a general spending freeze in the City of Bogalusa as proposed by the Bogalusa City Council. And at this time, President Kelles, I believe that I would, that I would like to get with, with our particular position that we're in now, I would like to get with Ms. Brown, our finance director, before this is brought off the table.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. That's going to conclude the meeting for tonight. We're gonna move now to further participation. If you would, if you have anything you'd like to comment on, or any questions you'd like to ask the council, the whole council, not individual council members, or the union address the administration, not one person, you can address the administration as you say. Come to the podium, give us your name, your address, and from see with your question or your statement. If you'd like, if anyone has anything you want to say. Let's see, Mr. Keith, Mayor.
Keith, Mayor, nine twenty-five East Fourth Street, apartment seven, here in Bogalusa. I see here where we're going to be, it's gonna come about the budget, the approval of the budget. I'm asking that this city council will work with our administration, with our mayor, his captain, so we can move this city forward. And you don't know, now, I don't say nothing but. We come here time after time and we play these childish games. We let people come up here and berate the administration. If I came up here and I berated Councilwoman Irvin, Councilwoman Kelles, Councilwoman Temple, I promise you they would have Eric Olisman and V P B over here. But this handicapped crippled guy, I would probably go on the ground. If I did it to Mr. Kelles, Ms. Temple, or Mr. Irvin. But, but if I do it to Ms. Keys, Ms. Case, and, uh, Ms. Smith, oh, that's entertainment. If, uh, if Ms. Douglas would have said nothing, it just would have went on. And that really wasn't her place to get it in line, and I can mean you for it, I'm not knocking you. It was Mr. Kelles' place. But like I said, when it's certain people going against certain people, that, that's a clown showing to certain other people, that's what they like. So I'm gonna encourage this council to please move your place and take your place. And if, and if you can't stand up and be a man in your place, then you don't need to hold the top position on this council. Thank you.
Thank you. If you feel the need, if you can.
It's any of our places. Any of us can, can have somebody move that.
But he's the president.
It doesn't matter, any of us. And the reason it went on so long with me, because I didn't even know what he was talking about. He never did get to his point. I wanted to know the point why you were up here talking about the administration, you know, but you never did get to that point. So when I got fed up, that's when I said something. But any of us here can stop anything.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mr. President?
Miss.
Or Miss President? Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thanks for that, President, I live at six forty one St. Augustine Street here in Bogalusa. Um, I, I, I do agree with some of the issues that Kate made. You expect us, the community, to handle ourselves in these meetings accordingly. And we expect you as council members to do the same in your behavior. Now, I'm not calling any name, but I don't work in the city. I'm not the council. I'm not the mayor's office. If you have my cell phone number, it's because I chose to give it to you. Not to browbeat, harass me, and try to bully me into retracting a statement I made in a meeting on February sixth. Again, Mr. President, this is your name. Your council members, not named individually, are out here in the public conducting and acting in a manner, I'm becoming of a position. Now when you're blowing up my phone, you're testing me back to back, asking me to retract something. A misunderstanding. Now, I agree, Mr. President, you need to get control of this situation because it's snowballing out of control. And I'm not calling any specific name, but if you have my phone number, don't call me before eight o'clock in the morning and don't call me after eight o'clock at night. And I'm gonna stand ten toes down to the ground on anything I say in here, and I'm not retracting any statements.
Thank you for that. Now, all I can say is because I'm aware that there's a problem you can't fix it, but whoever you are that's calling this lady, I'm gonna ask you to stop. When she said you, she was talking to me, I guess, but I don't know who she was talking to.
No.
I'm there to call this lady, nobody else in this, in this office, except somebody that's on this council or if it's a member of the administration. My phone number, if it's listed, if you want my phone number, it's there. You wanna talk to me about it, you can call me up and talk to me about it. You don't have to deliberate anyone in this council because you, someone called you up and we don't know who they are. We can't correct you if we don't know who they are. I'm figuring out right now, y'all, call this lady, please. You're not calling her anymore. I thank you for that. The next person is Mr. Joel Miller. The next person will be Mr. Marvin Austin.
The world's going pretty good. My name is Marvin Austin, seven thirty-six, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. I just like to say the public has a right and a constitutional right to put your kids and just, you know, govern them by this. And Mr. Mayor got up and he said that the president has to have control over the behavior and the decorum of the council meeting. And he's right. And here everybody can't control it from this age. The president controls the behavior. And people are gonna have vice president. And very bad laws. That's the way it's gone. Like this, we're out, taking control and run things. If you're gonna do that, you don't need a president and a vice president. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Good place, there.
Pretty thorough, nineteen thirty-one D with place. I'd like to ask the council and the mayor, if a senior citizen have a trailer home, a double wack, and he wanna replace it with a new one, would he be able to do it? When I say senior citizen, I mean people in their age.
Of course.
I don't know, they're gonna do an orphanage, it's grand father then.
We, we can bring it up again, but the answer will be no because if it's not already grandfathered in, you're not allowed to bring a new trailer home into the existing place.
This is over, this is over grand father in.
Right.
So what I'm asking you all to do. What I'm asking you all to do, get back to me and let me know because the senior citizens, speaking of, they need somebody to speak up for them, you understand? And you all know me, I try to help anybody. So now I'm trying to help senior citizens, get them a new trailer home and replace this old one, you understand? So if y'all can get that way, let me know, please do it, right away. And also I'd like to say, we need to start getting the, the family of people that don't take their garbage can and kids. Because I'm sick of seeing garbage can and any kids from one third to the next third. It don't make no sense. Bogalusa can get cleaned up. But the mayor can't do it by himself, I can't do it by myself. So I'm asking each council to get involved and help the city employees get this taken care of. Because it's very important that we make Bogalusa look better. And I'd like to thank Reverend Clay for speaking to this council and the citizens of Bogalusa. It was overdue. We need, we need more memberships come here and speak because it's important to listen to what the, the medicine is saying. And I've been trying to get the medicine to come to meetings forever. But it seems like people just have death years when they come to this government by any means. And I don't think that's correct. And also, I'd like to know, get an update on that shed on Southern Drive that was swept out there recently, that I went to zoning, we talked against it, being flipped there. That's ridiculous. Though every day when I pass through and see it, I don't like the way it look. People, people was calling me, talking about complaining about it. People in this community, that's like moved. And a house wrapped up next to it need to be torn down. And I, I wish you all get on it. And let's get this city cleaned up, and I'm not dogging around at night, but I am asking for help to let's get this city cleaned up. And Southern Drive, a couple of buildings need to be torn down on Southern Drive and some more people need to be cleaning up their property. And on Columbus Street, have y'all been to South Columbus Street lately? It's a disgrace down there. We need to get that cleaned up, we really do. And the building like this, part of trying to fall off.
They knocked it off.
They knocked it off? Well, we need to make them knock it back on. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, those issues, some of those problems you just spoke of, sir, have been addressed with the code officer, okay? And we have a legal staff that's looking into what we can get done about that, sir. We shall, we'll get back with you on that problem you brought up tonight, sir. That's gonna conclude, conclude public participation. We'll now have an administrative remark.
Good evening. Um, this past Saturday, Cassidy Park was a fun-filled weekend for the children. Our Parks and Rec Commission, they hosted breakfast with the Easter Bunny. It was three or four different sessions that went over really well. We also attended the General O T C Raider Challenge. Bogalusa High School, J R O T C has been hosting for the second year, a state championship of sorts where the cadets, they come in and they, they go through different obstacle courses. It was really neat to watch. It's a break in the environment, see? And to top it off, Bogalusa High School, they were actually crowned state champions this year. So I think that's really phenomenal. That's something that we should all be proud of. Um, next year, they're looking to incorporate Mississippi as well, so it might be a by-state agreement. We also have the Maggie R. Park Grand opening coming up this Saturday at ten a.m. We hope you all will come out. It's over, um, off of, what's the street?
It's on Maggie R. Park.
Yeah, it's where Maggie R. and Willie Peters meet.
Yes.
So Saturday at ten a.m., please be our guests. We also have an Easter egg hunt scheduled this Sunday at one p.m. in Cassidy Park. That's the citywide Easter egg hunt. This year we have ten thousand eggs, so bring the, bring the kids out. The chief of police service is well underway. We're working with the civil service board to start the process. If you all did not know, Chief Bulling has retired since April first, so the city is searching for a new police chief. We'll be sending out selection committee applications later, either later this week or early next. Youth core applications, if you know teenagers that are interested in working for the city this summer in the beautification program that we hosted last year. Those applications are due April first, they're on our social media site as well as the city website. People can also come down to the Word Building and request a paper copy. Our second annual Women's History Montee is this Friday, here in here in the courtroom. Please be our guest, any women in the city, you all are invited. And then last thing, the city is partnering with Yohilla's Restaurant on Louisiana Avenue for Cinco de Mayo Street Festival. It will be a family-oriented event on May fourth, so more information will be coming soon about that. Thank you all for coming tonight.
May I ask myself, I just want to address the council, how well it's going. Me, a lot or not, but I, I turn a wrench every day, me and Daddy Morris. And we need this budget passed as fast as possible because we got antiquated equipment. We got, in, in reality, we have twelve workers that go out and cover everywhere. Out of third color blue, but you got the tree planters, cover the ship workers and all that. We, we need, we need equipment, we need tools, and we need a few men, so. And I do try to address all of y'all's problems, but it takes manpower and it takes some recent work. Because we, we have dump trucks from the nine ninety-seven, ninety-eight, so I just wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. President. Concluding administrative remarks, Mr. Chris, you had something? Okay, one else, I'd like to thank the administration, move on to Councilman Mark. The first person you'd like to have talk with tonight is Councilwoman Smith.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to be in, um, very lively in your sitting, the Singapore. Also, I just want to give recognition to Southeast Pregnancy Center. It's located on Avenue Health. Misses Lee, um, she is the, the D O N over the facility at this time and the director. Um, her number is nine eight five two six four nine 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 eight, and we welcome any donations. Um, it's a scale where all women who are expecting within the parish are able to come and receive help. I myself am a board member and we just want Bogalusa to know that we are open Monday through Thursday, and we're here to help any, um, woman that may be expecting or even thinking about giving, um, her child up for adoption. So it's just another service that's here in Bogalusa and I'm proud to announce that services. Also, congratulations to the Parks and Rec Department, they have been doing an outstanding job. Um, congratulations to all the kids who participated this past weekend in the seventy. All the kids did a wonderful job. Um, please don't forget to get out and vote, let your voice be heard. Last day of vote will be the twenty-third of this month. Let's remember all the bereaved families at this time. Also, let's keep in mind and support the community actions you can give, President, Mr. Joel. They have lost two of their members this year, so we definitely want to, um, keep the bereaved families, um, uplifted and to support Mr. Joel at this time and his group because they do an outstanding, outstanding job. They're, they're small in number, but they're big in impact and they're hard to beat. Um, I would like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Lockhart, um, they are the owners of Legends, um, located here on Fourth Street. They are doing a wonderful job within the community, donating, giving back, taking time to be advisors to the youth. So we definitely want to commend them on the job they're doing. And at this time, I would just like to say that, as your councilwoman, my number is nine eight five five seven zero seven one four five. You can call me. If I do not answer, please send me a text. I do have time to talk, visit into conflicts and concerns, or just to mirror, I think you're doing a good job. Lately, me and my kids' names have been drug everywhere. I don't get on, on Facebook. I don't get on Instagram, on Facebook and entertain anyone. I'm not hard to find. My address is five five four six seven. I don't have time for games. I'm here to do a job. My personal business is my personal business. I don't have anything to hide. Um, I don't entertain people on Facebook because that's not what I'm gonna do. And the reason some people don't entertain my name on Facebook because as Pastor Clayton said, I get on my knees and pray, not only for my family, but for my entire city and the country as a whole. No one is gonna play with me in a form or fashion where, where I feel at the need of forty-two years of age to get back and entertain them. I pray and I ask the Lord to guide my steps every day. I'm human. My flesh, my flesh does get weak, and I fight temptations every day. Sometimes I'm able to control it, sometimes I am not. It's getting to the point that it's really getting aggravating to me that people will play with my family. And I just wanted to say publicly, if I've done anything to anybody, I do apologize. I ask you to pray for me, and I will continue to pray for you. And I am grateful for this position. I work hard on every job and every task, no matter if I'm on the side of the road, picking up trash, or just knocking on your door to see what can I do to help you. So with that being said, I would like to also say thank you, the city is looking brighter, to Councilman Urban and Ms. Kate, and my brother who's in the back. Um, Mr. Mark Urban called the energy people, and we were told if you just go out and tag the poles, we will make sure that the lights will get redone. So we have been going throughout the city, making sure that the city is brighter. Pastor Clayton, I do wanna thank you for coming up and sharing the word because that's very important. And at the end of the day, if you don't have anyone to lean on, and no one to call, you can always call on God, for he is the head of my life. No, I am not perfect, but I do take all my matters to him and pray. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. The next person we'd have up will be, uh, Councilwoman Key.
Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight.
All right, thank you for that, Councilwoman Key. Councilwoman Temple.
I just have a few things tonight. Um, I would like to thank the police and fire and public works, once again, all of their hard work and things that they do to help our city. Um, time has changed, and so now the students are loading buses in the morning until dark. So please, as you're going to work in the mornings and leaving your house, please watch and pay attention to make sure that, you know, you're noticing the children that are waiting for the buses on the side of the road, and, and that you're taking your time. I hope to see everyone Saturday, March twenty-third at ten o'clock at Maggie R. Park for the grand opening. If you have not been by there, it's in District C on Maggie R. and William Peters. It is a fabulous little park, and, um, people in the community have already been enjoying it. I love driving by and seeing the families that are out and using the little track and, and using the swings and equipment. So if you can, um, come by Saturday at ten, we'd love to see you.
Thank you for that. Here, Councilwoman Key.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, continued prayers for our week. And, um, as was mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Ben Lewis, which was an advocate, he attended our council meetings, as well as the Spike's family. And he would keep them up a prayer, and also our six, our six is shut in. Uh, Pastor Clayton, thank you again, and Mrs. Clayton for attending. Thank you for the word. We need the word, we need unity in the city of Bogalusa. And, uh, just saying, I'm not sure Reverend Robinson is here. Uh, there's talk of, uh, a street ministry uh, that will be conducted here to, in the city of Bogalusa.
Counting in.
He all says counting in. And Reverend Robinson wants to initiate that with all the pastors. As you mentioned, it doesn't matter what, uh, faith, what, what race, you know, and we need to reach out, uh, to all, not only our young people, but to all people. Um, Mr. Austin, you mentioned about Mr. Barnes, Mr. Sam Barnes, yes. Uh, I did a bit of research on him as well, and we may have to, well, not maybe, but I'll look into some additional research on Mr. Barnes and see what's going on with, with, uh, with him as well, we recognize out of the Bonido area, but in the city of Bogalusa as well. Um. Mr. Farrell, you indicated about Barnes can't pick up. You're correct, this is a law that we passed many years ago, and we have to get with our code enforcer to make sure the, the guards can, has to be picked up twenty-four hours after, you know, the actual pickup. So we'll get with our code enforcer as well to see if we can get, get that rolling because it is something that's, that's constantly, uh, looked upon. Uh, if I have offended anyone, uh, I do apologize for that, for anything that I've done. I am dedicated to the citizens of Bogalusa and continue to be dedicated to the city of Bogalusa. I think that's, oh, thank you to our police department, public works, and our fire department for the job that you're doing. We really appreciate it. And, uh, Mr. Pastor, you're absolutely correct. We do have to get on, on this budget as soon as possible, even if it means that we have special needs in between the, uh, the guy that my assistant delayed from us by, uh, the legislative office. We do have to, we gotta get on it, we need, we need to get on it, we need it. And with that being said, thank everyone once again for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Key. Councilwoman Urban.
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and, uh, thank you Pastor Kelly Clayton. I just want to add to you one thing about that, I can't remember in detail about the drive on us. And I will tell you one other thing, that God is looking for his ten righteous in Bogalusa. And it's, and it's a rare opportunity when you find somebody that's called and chosen. They won't do things for money. They will do things regardless of the color of your skin, or anything, and make sure that job is done for the glory of the Lord. They may not sit on a church pew up front or anything. I've known three of them in the past five years. All unfortunately passed away with heart attacks and cancer. And a lot of people say, ask, ask the question, why would the Lord do them that way? Or remember, Christ suffered on the cross, and he was held to the cross. So I, they, these people went through their trials. But I would tell you, when they were alive, and they were both black and white, they went above and beyond the call of duty. And they went and made sure the elderly was taken care of when they didn't food or whatever, and they didn't ask for anything in payment. And it was a joy of watching me, watching these individuals do that. And we need a tribe to be like that in Bogalusa. And when that happens, we will, one day, break bread at this table, and all for the glory of the Lord. But back to the story, uh, the main thing is, we are out actually rocking streetlights. We're trying to improve the safety and not be scared to walk out of the front house because it's dark. And I'm working on the major thoroughfares right now. I'm not familiar with all the other streets and the side of the streets, but I do know all the council people that I'm going through the major thoroughfares first. You gotta make the street, you gotta make the city also look beautiful at night as you're coming into the city, the mayor's trauma, and Mr. Smalls can't sell it to a, a, a major retailer or a commercial developer or anything, to all looks at our looking at night. And then make it look beautiful. It's nothing more beautiful when you come into the street, and you see all the streetlights turned on, and you can also see the beauty at night. So we're working on, I'm working on the different sections of the city and working on the major thoroughfares. I have, I did look down the streets and tell the council people where their streetlights are at. That's up to them to do the side streets, I'm doing the major thoroughfares. I done the ones in District D first. So, you know, I went to my district, and you just can't see many things running. You just, they, they short out all the time, so I'm always running around. And I do all that beyond taking care of my mother, city council and jobs, and people blowing up my phone, worrying me about what happened at council meetings and stuff like that. I'm, I'm really tired of all the drama. I really won't, I turn these things over to God. I pray Proverbs chapter twenty verse one, maybe twenty twenty-one. "Lord, turn the heart of the king's worship wheel." I'm not a king. Y'all are, I'm asking to, to get right, to get right with the Lord. And the thing is that, and I know I get, I get upset. I do get upset, some of these guys know this. I'm very passionate. I made a deal with my dad, and nothing unethical, a crook, that was two weeks before he passed away. I've held to that promise to this day. And I know some of y'all may not like me or whatever, but I, in the end, I just sit back and I said, "Lord, just help him to see." So I just ask to this day, every day belongs to the Lord, and I just want to tell y'all, I still love y'all, even though that you may not like me. The Lord, the Bible says, "Pray for your enemies." Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Douglas.
Say good evening. Thank you everyone for coming out. Pastor Clayton, uh, that's not to get that Saturday is the last day to Bogalusa. Uh, also, uh, Good Friday. Uh, my pastor, Reverend, uh, Dyer, he will be here, uh, on Good Friday at four p.m. We will gather up here at City Hall. We will carry the cross to where the Evanesi Baptist Church. I don't care if you're black, white, blue or brown, if you feel like joining in, please come and join in. Like Pastor Clayton said, hey, God is God. He don't have costs. So if you feel that you wanna come, and you wanna join in, put your walking shoes on, and let's carry this cross because I'm gonna be here. More than likely, I'll be pushing a stroller with two little children in there, but I'm gonna be here. And I ask you to come out and, uh, to help carry. Did you say carry? Help carry this cross from City Hall back to where the Evanesi Baptist Church. I ask God to bless you, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Appreciate all your words of encouragement. Just keep this council in y'all's prayers, if you are a prayer. If you believe in prayer, if you believe in praying, pray for us as well as our administration, and pray for this city. Mr. Clayton, my pastor Clayton, Reverend Clayton, sir, thank you for your time. Thank you. Your words were well taken. I hope that everyone took it, took heed to it. Ladies and gentlemen, our next council meeting will be somewhere, uh, somewhere at ten a.m. on the second, I believe it is, April the second at five thirty. Y'all have a good night, and we mean it.